All right, so we'll get going. It's the Great Barrington Planning Board meeting for Thursday, June thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March twelfth, two thousand and twenty order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law and Governor Healy's March twenty-nine, two thousand and twenty-three revised order extending remote participation by all members in any meeting of a public body. This meeting of the planning board will be conducted both in person and via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information and the general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and or parties with the right and or permission to attend this meeting can be found on the town's website. For this meeting, members of the public and committee members may attend the meeting in person or may attend remotely by following the instructions on this agenda. For those who are not in person, every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. Additionally, pursuant to MGL Chapter thirty A, Section twenty F, after notifying the chair of a public body, any person may make a video or audio recording of an open session of a meeting of a public body or may transmit the meeting through any medium. At the beginning of the meeting, the chair shall inform other attendees of any such recordings. Any member of the public wishing to speak at the meeting must receive permission of the chair. The listing of agenda items are those reasonably anticipated by the chair which may be discussed at the meeting. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. And per Section two four one, two four one, definitely the town code, except for procedural and housekeeping matters, town residents shall have the right to address a board on any item that requires a vote at a time before the board votes on that item, such residents will be allowed as much time as a proponent of an item is permitted to have. All right, so, uh, let's see, are we all here? Malcolm?
Yes.
Jackie?
Yes.
Jonathan?
I'm here, yes.
Pedro?
Yes.
Let's see, I guess we don't have Jeremy online, so he is, oh, good. Oh, hey, there's Jeremy. Jeremy, you're here, right?
So.
Uh, he's muted, but he's here. His thumb is up. You can hear us. Okay, cool. And I'm here, Brandy's here. Okay, so do we have any formates? Having none, we'll move on to minutes of May twenty-third. Um, do we have a motion to, um, approve as amended?
So moved.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Sure.
We had a discussion on the minutes. All in favor? Oh, yeah, roll call, sorry, guys. Uh, Malcolm?
Uh.
Jonathan?
Hi.
Pedro?
Hi.
Jeremy?
Hi.
Randy, I, okay, minutes are approved. Um, Kim, do you mind sending me the final version of the minutes so that I can send them on to Angela Lamonto at the Sonic Improvement Committee?
Yep, thank you.
All right, next item on our agenda, it is a site plan review for sixty-nine Seacom Road, which is an application for a ground-mounted accessory solar energy system greater than seven hundred and fifty square feet by right in an R four zone on a parcel identified as slot sixty-one V on tax map thirty-three in an R four zone and filed in accordance with Section nine twelve six one. So, we have some plans. Do you want to come up and introduce yourself?
Yeah, sure. Hi, everyone, I'm Keith Torrico, um, work for Torrico Electric and Energy Solar. Um, it's, is a project that we're trying to move forward. It's an interesting one because it's, the parcel is in three separate towns, so it's in a lot of weird ways, which um, it's interesting. So where we are proposing to do all the work is actually in Great Barrington. Um, so we're looking for, uh, the site plan approval for the section file.
Okay, um, has everyone had a chance to see the plans?
We can't see much from Seacom Crossroad.
Right, so just to describe where this is located, it is, um, the parcel fronts on Seacom Road, um, it is south, is that south of Sweet Street Farm?
Yes.
Um, and the, the panels are supposed to be located in Open Field, um, just to the west of Seacom Crossroad, the dirt section of Seacom Crossroad. Right? Yes. And so
The seasonal part.
The seasonal part, yeah, that's a nice word to use. My favorite part has been the spot. All right, um.
Just as a reminder, section nine point twelve point four has design and performance standards for all ground mounted stairway persons. Then nine from twelve point six does certain site plan review standards follow to, uh, to the change of.
Um, I have a question first. Uh, the accessory use for residential is, uh, for generating power only for the residents. Um, this seems awfully use a lot of that, that, that much power?
Yeah, so the proposed system, they actually won't technically in any month, um, be exporting any power back onto the grid. Because of how much power they use. And the way that we figure that out is by taking a solar reading, taking into account the GPS location, the orientation, and the amount of power that these units will produce, and then mapping that across their historic usage. Um, so there's potentially one month where they might export like a hundred kilowatt hours, which is not very much.
Right.
Uh, so they're going to be using most of the power.
Yeah, and they have an agreement then with National Grid that would limit their, um.
Is it a net metering?
Net metering. So because they have three-phase power there, and that is what we're going to be putting in, we can put in up to a fifty kilowatt, um, KW system. Um, and that would be what is called a qualifying system. We could put up to a twenty-five KW, which would be a net metered system, which means any power that you push back, it's given back to you on your account on a one-to-one credit.
Right.
Because this is over that limit, but it's under the fifty KW. They they'll get a one-to-one credit month to month, but any power that makes work there, um, in, in a billing cycle, it's credited back to the account on an industrial rate.
So, why isn't this a commercial installation? I mean, because, I mean, they're, they're, they're entering an agreement that allows them to sell electricity back to the grid. Every solar system does that.
No, but they do it, but the, the National Grid limits you in net metering to how much you actually use over a twelve-month period.
But this is a residential property.
Right.
Okay.
Right, and the size and power consumption at the property, if I understand Mr. Torrico correctly, is, has resulted in a significantly larger service side, the size than your average resident. You said give a three-phase service? Are they fully electrified on the property? Like, like is there HVAC all electrified and?
Yeah, there's, they have a, a large usage, but so for a three-phase system, for a residential system right now, uh, to be net, fully net metered, you can only put in a ten thousand kilowatt system, but you can put in a bigger system.
You just can't, you won't, you can't get any money back.
You won't get the credits, man. So the three-phase system, um, you can put up to a twenty-five KW system and be fully net metered. If you go over that, you just won't be fully net metered, but since they are going to be using all of the power, it's, um, kind of a mute point.
There's, no, you're gonna have eight eight units, uh, with, uh,
Seven.
Seven. Seven. So, uh, that, that's more than fifteen kilowatts.
So what we have done with this system is we have gotten an official letter from the inverter manufacturer that has de-rated uh, the two inverters, two oh eight, uh, three-phase inverters that we're proposing to put in that are on the one line, and that's in there. Um, and so they de-rate them down to quite five KW each. And the reason that we do that is because we live in the northeast, nothing's perfect, and even with these units who, which maximize the potential of those solar panels, you're never actually going to be making more than that fifty KW, so we're just maximizing the potential of the system while putting it in as a, as a fifty KW.
So the inverters are limiting what's?
Yeah, and, and that's, we have to do separate permitting with National Grid, um, to actually have them allow this. Like, we, we can't install any system that we install without getting approval from them first.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so that's why this is a, uh, engineered stamped one-line, uh, with the documentation. We back it up.
Okay, so, um, uh, uh, I'm not gonna push this too far, but I, I, I would feel more comfortable if we knew exactly how much their assumption of electricity was to, you know, to feel comfortable that they're not generating power to sell back to the agency.
Do you have data on electric consumption you can share with us?
Yes.
Um, and is that like an average annual consumption versus the?
I can give you the air exact, um, consumption for the past year.
Yeah, that's all we can do.
And then I can tell you what the proposed system is expected to produce.
Is, when you say expected to produce too, just given what you had said earlier about the de-rated inverters, is, is that the theoretical maximum or like the estimated actual output based on a model?
Um, it's the estimated output based on our model, taking a site reading onsite at that location with the GPS location, the height of the sun for every month.
Yep.
And taking into account shading and sort of.
Right, okay, so do, do, the difference Malcolm is that, you know, if the panels always got the light in an exact optimum, uh, uh, position, it would generate a theoretical maximum, and that's usually what's on the main plate of the solar panels, but the actual consumption is gonna be something different.
Depending on whether, based on how much daylight.
Exactly.
So, the estimated first year of production is a hundred and twenty thousand, one hundred and fifteen kilowatt hours, and that would offset their consumption by seventy-two percent.
Wow, wow.
They must keep their house colder and warmer than I do.
Since you have saved some hope.
Yeah, so they are still expected to use forty-seven thousand, nine hundred and one point two kilowatt hours from the grid.
Okay. All right, so over a year's time there.
I, I wish we could put more in, but we can't.
Do you feel that about that, Malcolm?
Yep.
So there
This is my question.
It's a percentage.
So, um, I had, I had a solar system, I was putting in fifteen, and they were two, two hundred and fifty watt pounds.
Mm-hmm.
And like twenty-eight of them, so I was supposed to produce seven KW, but I'm actually producing much closer to nine KW. Is, because it's a, it's not a tracker, but it's perfect solar.
Yeah.
So will these produce more than the, the rating for their panels?
So the, the, what I, the numbers I just read are based off of the readings that I took, uh, onsite. And then based off of the fact that they are at maximum production, and it's like, let's get a system, you know, it's a belter, goes up in the morning, then goes down, these, it goes straight up in the morning, produce at maximum potential all day, and that's what those numbers are based on.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, not gonna shade any Christmas trees.
Yeah.
So, uh, does anyone have any other questions for the applicant? Um, Chris, I have a question, just in terms of the dimensional requirements in twelve-three. Am I, am I reading this wrong? That it's a ground-mounted solar energy system shall not be located within the front, side, or rear yard?
Mm-hmm.
In the zoning district where the system is located?
Meeting was set back.
Oh, in the
Required.
Ah, okay, sorry, I was like, wait a minute, how do we do that? All right, so design and performance standards? You guys wanna run through those and just see how we do?
How about it?
Have added, well, I think we have to for the record. So, um, under nine twelve four, uh, ground-mounted solar energy systems that are permitted by right over special permit shall comply with the following standards. Visual impacts, reasonable effort shall be made to minimize visual impact from public right-of-way and abutting properties, dense vegetation is the preferred method of screening. Looks like the natural vegetation and the sighting on the site provides for that.
Right.
Uh, auditory impacts, impacts of the system shall cause no increase in sound levels beyond background levels measurable on abutting residential properties. Um, the trackers have like a little bit of noise associated with them.
Yeah, it's, I mean, it's, it's hard to even hear it when you're standing next to it, because it's like every three to seven minutes, depending on what time of year it is, and just like, looks in the, 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 ever so slightly. It was the closest problem. Um,
Either way.
Closest to your house?
Is, um, Chris's property.
He's not gonna hear, no way he's gonna hear.
No.
And I, and there's, it's like a natural
Tree has their
Down there, so it's like very tucked in, and that was something that, uh, the homeowner, that's why they wanted to push it so far down, is because it seemed like such a natural place to kind of hide it, not only from himself, but also from Chris. And I talked to Chris about it today and sent him these plans, and he said he has no issues with it. Uh, and so it was okay to tell you best that he had no issue with it.
Thank you. Um, number three is land clearing erosion, uh, solar erosion and habitat impacts. Um, is there for running the, um, service? Is there clearing proposed?
There's no clearing proposed. Uh, the trench is going directly through that field.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, but that line is on the plan.
Yep.
It's gonna actually just keep going through the field. Well, it looks like there's just shading from the trees. It's going straight through the field, um, to the existing shed.
The shed does exist, okay, that was one of my questions, if that was existing at the beginning.
Yeah.
That's a quick question with the trenches. It seems like a long way. Did we experience some kind of, some losses?
Yeah, we, uh, have to upsize, um, the wire to a certain extent to accommodate, um, loss. Um, so we've done those calculations and figured out what size wire we need and that's on the, for then, you know, sure that there isn't.
So just by sizing up the conduit?
Sizing of the wire.
The wire.
Yeah.
With the?
Yeah.
Um, because naturally, runs middle of the line.
When, when you put DC through wire, you can use much smaller wires below that distance, there is still loss, so they're, they're upsized to a certain extent.
So you've got the inverters at the shed, is there a, oh, the transformer, is, you're going to be existing transformer then? There's already a transformer.
Yeah, so we're, we're interconnecting the power in that shed and, um, pulling, uh, larger wires through an existing conduit to the shed that will directly connect to the existing service.
Okay. Excellent. Uh, let's see, the next item is agricultural land. Is this considered permanent?
This is prime agricultural soils.
Okay.
Um, so it should be considered on this criteria.
Okay.
But it's less than a, it's about half an acre.
Very, it's very small impact, but definitely is own.
Right, sure.
Okay.
And, and they have the, they have the barn and the farm across the street as well.
Yeah.
So number four is where systems are proposed on farmland or on prime farmland soils is defined by the USDA, uh, Natural Resource Conservation Service. Systems shall be designed, shared, and operated to minimize soil compaction and loss of soil fertility, and shall incorporate active farm uses to the extent practical. Uh, do you know, are they mowing that meadow for hay or anything?
They don't mow it for hay, they just maintain it.
They just mow it?
Yeah.
Okay, so they're mowing it more just for aesthetic purposes, but not in May, no mow May.
And the nice thing about these units is that it's very minimal impact, you know, like you dig a core by four foot hole, the base goes in, and then it's just the trench, and then these units feel flat.
Yeah.
Um, whenever you walk them through or at night, so they can be mowed under, and then there's no, um, wires that are accessible to animals or people, even when they are insulted. Um, so if somebody wanted to run sheep or cows, they would need these units, they could.
And so, um, you didn't provide a detail, but you were making a good point about what kind of foundation they have. Are they, are they like augured in, like a yellow pile, or are they up towards?
It's a, uh, cast concrete base
Okay.
That gets set in, leveled, and then compacted every few feet as they come up, and then we bolt, uh, pole onto it.
Okay.
With the head on, and then lift the, uh, rail up to it.
Okay.
It's a lot of leverage on that on that foundation.
Yeah, definitely. So, uh, just to continue, the agricultural soils one, it says the land removed from agricultural use shall not exceed twenty percent of the total existing agricultural land in common ownership or fifteen acres, whichever is less, so I don't think we exceed either of those.
No. You can eyeball that one.
Yeah, um, lighting, any proposed lighting shall be provided for emergency use only, I assume there's no lighting proposed. Utility lines, uh, utility lines between a solar energy system and the utility grid shall be underground to the extent feasible, appears to be what's proposed. Um, fences, all perimeter fences, uh, there's no fencing proposed, right? Um, plantings and seed mix, all proposed landscape and revegetation shall be non-invasive species and seed mix that are pollinator and habitat friendly and do not require the use of pesticides or herbicides. Do you have any objection to that being, okay, so that's a requirement of the total, just for the purpose of the permits, so it's fair. Right, um, let's see, so then, in addition to our normal ten point five, I think that was it, right? What, nine twelve six? Citing is one through six. Yeah, okay, so for site plan review under nine twelve six, number one just indicates which size systems are subject to site plan review that includes this system. Number two, in addition to the submittal requirements, the project proposed shall provide the following, the location of farmland soils by type, plans to protect, maintain, or restore the same, location of proposed utility connections and disconnects, location and details of proposed access roads in and around the solar energy system, location and details of any perimeter fencing, structural details of the system, and an operation and maintenance and emergency management plan. Copy of the site plan, electrical schematics, and emergency plan shall be provided to the building inspector and the fire chief prior to issuance of a certificate of occupancy. Um, periodic, not less than annual certification and summary of operations and maintenance activities, including mowing or farming, as applicable, shall be submitted to the planning board. Oh, and this says we should send it to the egg, emission, that's a limitation, okay. Uh, and twelve eight doesn't, right?
Right, that's
Okay. All right, so I think the only thing we didn't have in our packet was just the axials.
Oh, we didn't have that, but it was very, it was pretty fun.
Based on just an online review.
Uh, I love the shiny soil, it's field, Arlington.
Oh.
You did provide the soil, it's like a stopped bridge by the
Oh, yes.
It's hard to
Okay, I see it now, thank you.
Yeah.
Let me go to ten point five unless someone else is already there.
You know.
Let's see. All right, so we will do ten point five site plan review. I don't remember where it was criteria. Should have them memorized right now. So, for consideration of site plan review, um, running through the condition, or the, um, criteria of ten point five point five. Number one is minimize the volume of cut and fill, uh, and the number of removed trees, six-inch caliber or larger, the length of removed stone wall, the area of wetland vegetation displaced, the extent of stormwater flow increase from the site, soil and erosion control, and threats to air and water pollution.
That's
Um, it, it, it's nominal. Do you know, like, in terms of those foundations, are they just gonna, like, smooth that soil out and cover it over with seed?
Yeah.
So they manage it on the site?
Go back the exact same way it was.
Okay. Um, number two is maximize accessibility and pedestrian vehicular safety, I don't think that one applies. Um, number three, minimize obstruction of scenic views from publicly accessible locations.
Can't even see it, can't see it.
Can't see it, it's not highly visible, a screen naturally. Um, number four, minimize visual intrusion, I don't think that one applies. Uh, number five, minimize glare from headlights, that one doesn't apply because there's no lighting. Number six is minimize unreasonable departure from the character, materials, and scales of buildings in the vicinity. Don't think that that one applies either. Number seven, minimize contamination of groundwater from on-site wastewater, that one doesn't apply.
No.
Uh, and ensure compliance with the provisions of the zoning by law, including curbing landscaping, but neither of those apply, so.
Right.
Um, this is compliant in terms of citing.
Yes.
All right, Miss Rumble, did we miss anything?
Well, we did not.
Okay. Um, are there any questions? Do you have any questions on the application? Yeah. No, is there anyone online that has, no questions online? Any more board questions? Um, so, uh, entertain a motion to, um, crew?
And I don't think we have any.
I just, I'm trying to think if there's approved consistently.
If the board, if the board approves, then we'll make a special note on the approval to the building inspector referencing that, um, item number seven regarding operations and management plan.
Okay, all right, so we have a motion to approve.
We do approve.
So Malcolm and seconded.
Okay, I'll second.
Seconded by Malcolm. Uh, any further discussion? Okay, we do a roll call because we're a mixed group today, so Malcolm?
Yes.
Jonathan?
Hi.
Pedro?
Hi.
Jeremy?
Hi.
Randy?
Hi.
All right. Good luck. Yep. Thank you for explaining, uh, explaining everything today.
I'll keep it soon. We can't do it.
Yeah. You put a sign out on the road.
I'm a great
You mean, you discuss or?
I have a couple, you can take it if you want.
No, I don't want that.
I, I would take a copy, I actually didn't make one.
Well, there you go.
That's fine.
We like recycling.
You want another large one?
Sure, yeah, that wouldn't hurt.
Certainly.
Inspector.
Yeah.
Great, thanks, Steve.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Jeremy, I did work.
All right, next item on our agenda is a vote, uh, regarding the application fees for site plan review and special permit. Uh, the last time we met, uh, we had a discussion around the permit fees and there was a need to bring this up again specifically for me, this item, right?
Right, we listed on last week's, last meeting's agenda, vote to amend the subdivision fees.
Which required the public hearing.
Right, but we neglected to, to note, um, special permit and site and application fees.
On the agenda, which is why it's showing up on the agenda again.
Take any action at the last meeting.
So that we could do things properly.
Just as a reminder, we do recommend an increase to both the cycling This does a reminder, we do recommend an increase to both the cycling application fees. Um, from seventy five dollars, which haven't changed since twenty eleven to two hundred dollars. And special permit fees from three hundred dollars to three hundred fifty dollars. Um, to cover the town's costs in administering these.
A lot of which is mailings, right? Particularly for.
Yeah, newspaper advertisements.
All of which have gone up.
Reference for innovation.
Okay, does anyone have any um questions about this? We discussed it at length at the last meeting, Jeremy, anything to you? No, okay, um, so do you have a motion to um approve the increase in application fees for site plan review and special permit?
So.
Thank you, Jonathan, for a second, thank you, Malcolm, any further discussion? Okay, uh, how do you vote now?
Yes.
Uh, Jonathan?
Oh.
Uh, Pedro?
Hi.
Jeremy?
Hi.
Randy, I. All right, there you go. All right, next item on the agenda is a discussion around zoning enforcement, general discussion regarding enforcement of conditions of site plan and special permit approvals. Uh, let's see, so we have we have often on discuss this many times, we've raised it with the select board at our joint meeting. Um, we have not had a conversation with the new building official team since they've come on board, so probably some outreach we could do there. Um, but I think I don't know, Pedro, you asked that this item would be put on on the agenda specifically related to some lack of compliance we've seen, because you know, it's inconsistent with the zoning and results in a built product that is. And and the upper plants, absolutely.
Well, there are some lighting issues around town. They are in conflict with the zoning, for example. On occasion, we were having the things that are not enforced. That are not site plan review specific, but that are in conflict. So if, I don't know, if you wanted to start with with the lighting issue is not, I mean what I wanted to discuss is not so much the lighting issue, but an issue where uh another entity other than the town or a citizen in this case. Let's just say National Grid. The corporate entity that has some jurisdiction over something in town. Like lights. They will come in and either change the lights themselves, change the bulbs or change the shielding, whatever. But is there any oversight, who's over, who's getting oversight? As to whether or not they are complying with the, what we put in the bylaw? Does that come into into play? If they, I mean, are they just an autonomous, not just them, but anybody? Whether it's DOT, whether it's National Grid, whatever it could be, wouldn't they have to abide by the local laws?
But if you're asking about lights on roadways within the public rights ways, then no. They're not subject to zone, the entity is not covered, followed rights of what, just just on property outside of the limits.
So if they're light, if they're lighting a neighborhood street.
Not subject to zone.
So.
Lighting doesn't apply.
So is there any kind of oversight?
So in.
I guess it depends on what it is, I can't speculate.
In terms of some of the conversion of streetlights that's been happening around town from one form of light to another form of light. Um, my understanding is that where the bulbs were basically swapped out. And that resulted in more lighting impact, that there are means of having shielding installed. Um, I can think of two instances in my own neighborhood where people requested shielding and it was put up. So I think there's a, there is a certain amount of communication that needs to happen with the town. Um, about this raising awareness.
Um, that you actually have a right to ask for shielding?
Absolutely.
And who do you ask? Yeah.
So I was told to ask.
Yes. So, um, I guess oversight is not the word, but you can certainly call town hall. Public Works is the most direct route to discuss this and they can make a call to National Grid to see if any modifications could be made.
So, or you buy a BB gun.
Don't buy a BB gun, please.
So, but in terms of what we actually vote on here and pass, I think that's, that was the, that that's the issue we've been talking about for months, and I think this addresses that, um, you know, I I don't know where this.
The the language I sent you guys.
Yeah, I know where you got it from and I don't know where it goes, you know, I mean, is this a a bylaw change or is this?
So do you mind if, just before we leave lighting, so in twenty nineteen, before the pandemic, I had been talking with the select board, a couple of select board members about whether or not we could pass a townwide lighting ordinance, which would be different than what is allowed under zoning. To try and mitigate some of the lighting that was sort of like when everyone was switching to LEDs and people were not yet aware of like how much brighter they can be and how the really white blue light can be really disruptive like for night driving and and so there were some really I thought egregious um conditions that have resulted in.
Yes, with Costco, so.
I, yeah. I won't get in any specifics, but but the the thought in talking with Steve and um, I think Ed was the deputy um chair at that point, great chair at that time, um was that we would need to pass like a townlight ordinance at town meeting, and so that kind of just got dropped unfortunately. Uh, it's something we could think about again, if that becomes an issue that we can think it, you know, was rising to a level of community concern.
It's not zoning related, so.
Not zoning related. Have to come, but they were looking for our input on it.
But we can lighten, not just the zoning body, we can propose something.
Well, it's okay, it's okay, exactly, so I mean, that's something we could think about if we wanted to have any kind of advisory.
I think.
I'm a little kept out to take it up personally myself right now.
Well, we have, yeah, posted here, I'm up with something.
Sure, of course.
Um, are there any egregious examples that you can call out?
Just go to the hill at night right now, I mean, my friend lives on some somewhere and then on Castle Hill, she's got neighbors who are experiencing, you know, fifty five hundred Kelvin lighting, ignited no shield, I mean, that's your neighbor.
To be clear, National Grid is not installing fifty five hundred K lights, they're fifty thousand K or less.
Tell them low back then, I was just there.
That is what is being installed, three thousand K or less. I think the primary issue with the new lamp heads that are being installed is that um the the light source is visible underneath or you're walking uphill to them, there's no longer um
I mean, it has a longer.
There's no longer the 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 plastic or what do we call that?
The um lens over the light.
There's no longer of maybe a that that lens over the light that can diffuse the light, the LED heads are not made that way, so once you're walking up the hill or you're under it, you see that heavy green and that can be quite rough. But I will tell you, for the record.
Well, you know.
So they just appear very.
I I spend a lot of time.
They appear very right. There are certain issues uh at some locations.
And it's again, respectfully, it's again, respectfully, it's not just walking underneath them. That sit in the living room of my friend's house and that light layering into that.
Yeah, that's, that's a geometry of that one is.
And that's the same at at the river, it's the same, we're just around the corner, so.
But in.
This doesn't affect my neighborhood, I just get calls and emails about this stuff.
In the same vein, though, if you would continue up Castle Street to the intersection with Lake, that's an example of one that did get shielded recently. Um, similar situation, the pool sits a little higher up on the hill and the people that are on the south side of Castle Street, I think we're getting the direct view of the diode and uh, grid came in and put a little like, you know, four or five inch shield on it and that has helped tremendously.
Right.
So I, so there is a solution there, I think it's a matter of communicating that to D W.
Well, in my opinion, it's not having any folks that we, I don't know if they follow it or who who, you know, before they, do they inform the town, like the National Grid comes in to do this work, do they inform the town, if they're going to do the work?
Uh, in general, the town did agree and um in fact, uh, promoted the switch to M E D. To say, to many tens of thousands.
So there was, you know, there was just communication between.
We don't know when individual lights will be changed. But townwide, we prompted the switch.
I'm just looking for a point of communication exchange as well. Right, because if we have a, if we've got regulations and quotes on them. There needs to be a way for those regulations to be communicated, right? So if they're, if you're going to them or they're coming to you and that's the sort of chain of events for any work with any other entity. Then there's a good chance that going through the effort, putting together some regulation would be fruitful.
I don't know if you need regulations.
This is really a case by case, the this particular situation is very case by case.
So, uh.
And it's not a it's not a process where they would come from building from the. So I don't know what that change would be.
I'm thinking of them just living in a community like that, do people talk, is there a mechanism that they talk to one another like next door? And they say, well, the seven people around this lamp, let's all get together and write Chris. I mean does, do people organize that way?
They do, but but some people don't. That's the, that's the point, I think if you went in my neighborhood, my lots of my neighborhood are big enough where maybe we wouldn't gather together as a group, you know, and I've got enough second homeowners along with it, but. So it's, I think on the hills, different.
There's a lot of organizing.
You live on top of each other on the hill for the most part, and so there's a lot more communication among neighbors. Plus, there's the list of.
There, I was gonna say, there, I mean, those are all sort of informal and whether or not people decide to reach out to town hall, I think is uh, maybe, you know, just trying to facilitate some communication uh, rather than just like spinning in a complaint mode, um, contact town hall. Um, I I I wanted to say, though, I'm thrilled to see the switch to LED lights, it was something the Energy Committee identified ten years ago as a potential significant cost savings, potential significant energy savings, so I think that's good, I think retrofitting anything on existing pools and existing housings. You're gonna have cases where the retrofit isn't perfect and you need to provide shielding and so it's just a matter of like having a channel of communication where people can be. Yeah. Yep.
I'm just thinking of um whether how people feel powerless or not powerless, are they, do they feel empowered to actually say something? And to whom do they address their their complaint? And it could be, we're talking about light, leading, lighting, whatever, um, now, but are there other issues like that? That would be helpful if we were having and I'm just thinking about the work that's coming up at the master.
Mm hmm.
And we're having, get getting together in different neighborhoods. Maybe there's certain things like lighting. Did you know that actually National Grid will make changes, but we we could all work together and make it a thing that we do for our neighborhood here?
Chris, do you know if the LED light switch was announced on any social media that the town gets in?
I take it.
Yeah, I was curious.
The fact that Jack is promoting promoting the fact for a town this size, Great Berenton has an extraordinary number of public officials involved in capacities on boards and commissions. Most likely, there are several in everybody's neighborhood that you could contact. Uh, and making that known in in a way like, you know, so and so is a, I'm angry, they have an issue. Well, no, or the select board or the town manager.
Yeah.
So I I take your point, yeah, you know, but something that maybe could be done a little bit better, but and.
Well, I'm just thinking also.
I think all members of all boards and commissions could help them. Make themselves.
But I mean, I've just been thinking about this myself and I wouldn't know who to call, I mean, I'd ask somebody here, but it's like, if you're just then my, I'm just imagining that there are other issues that might bother folks and maybe.
People are not afraid of.
They aren't.
Which is fine. Shouldn't be.
All right.
So, okay, so then going on to the issue of enforcement, I mean, Jackie, an example where a lighting uh requirement was approved as part of a site plan and I don't believe ever enforced is over the holiday end, when they put their third story on. They had some, they have some floodlights on the south side of the building that don't have any shielding, and so we have said, those need to be shielded, they're not shielded. So um, in terms of how we don't currently have any mechanism for enforcement, um, I think we should engage the building department and see how we can be helpful, but the, I had shared with you guys some language from another municipality that I've been working in for a while and um, the language is something that is required to be placed on the site plan, just to sort of signal to all parties that um what is approved is what needs to be built and you certify to that with as-built drawings. And you don't get your C O until those are submitted and so that maybe is something, and I didn't know if there's a, if there's anything you know of, Chris, that we couldn't propose language like this. And I wouldn't want to do it without talking with the building department first, but.
I confess, I didn't see your email.
That's okay, so I I can I read it for you?
Sure.
So I sent an email, um, and it's, it's proposed language to go on to site plans, the note reads as-built plans and inspection of improvements. No certificate of occupancy shall be granted until the applicant has filed a set of as-built plans with the city engineer and building inspector. Indicating any deviations from the approved site plan. The building inspector shall be responsible for the inspection of site improvements, including coordination with the city engineer and shall grant a certificate of occupancy upon a finding that the project as-built complies in all material respects with the site plan.
So do we already have a policy that essentially says this?
Well, in the the procedures of site plan, so you can't take out a building permit unless you have site. Right, so you take out site point, you you get a building permit based on site plan review. Then the project gets built different than site plan review, that's the problem.
Yeah. Is there, is there, there's no requirement for the building inspector to enforce the site plan?
So in previous discussions with the building department, um what I was told is that sometimes there are subtle deviations and where is the line where they need to refer someone back? Like, if they move a window six inches, is that a big deal?
Unless they rotate the building ninety degrees.
Uh, and so it has been, it has been up through today, a judgment call on the part of the building official as to whether or not something is substantial or enough. Um.
This still is, this still makes a judgment call. It doesn't make sense, how can you make a judgment call on something that this board decides?
Well, so let's just keep in mind, there's been some some personnel changes and so we're dealing with an entirely new group of people, I doubt that they're less overwhelmed with the amount of work they need to do, and so if we can think of a means of sort of constructively supporting. Um, you know, we know what we've approved and so we see it as it's going up, is there a a constructive way to engage with the building department about how we can help signal to them whether or not something appears inconsistent with the plans? The most egregious example we're all familiar with is I hate to call out the applicant, but you know, the dermatology said.
By the time it gets to that point, that's too late.
It wasn't when I first flagged it.
I guess not.
Her name was done.
And she did when the friend you found, but I guess it wasn't too late, because, you know. The building inspector could stop the work. He says, you know, you need to have to reapprove or recite planning. There was one who could have.
So the idea of an as-built plan, are they going back in and submitting a whole new plan that's, or is this what they actually built from?
Basically, what they would do, like take tonight's plan that shows the layout, let's say actually they move everything, you know, six feet further up the hill. Because they hit big boulders when they're trying to put those foundations in. They would record that on the plan and they would raise it as a deviation.
That is what they would do normally, required by law.
No. No.
They are not currently required to submit an as-built.
They should, uh they it's the discretion of the building inspector.
Does he always make note of those changes? Do they get called out to him so that he'd even know?
He carries, doesn't, doesn't do, sit one of you go to the building inspector.
Well, let me add aboard this, this is in Randy's email that she just read. What does this mean? They probably have six different versions of what this means. And this is what Randy said. Quote, the project complied, but as-built complies in all material respects with the site plan. What does that mean? In all material respects.
Everything that's shown.
I agree with.
Every single thing. So Randy just used an example of this was moved six feet or six inches this way. Is that a change that requires a new site plan approval? I I think you should think pretty deeply about whether and how you require that. That's extraordinary, the amount of things that change during construction. It may be an obstacle, you know this well. Then things change naturally in construction, like a means or a method has to change in the field. Something gets moved six inches, six feet. Things change. You want everything to change at each time it changes to come back to you? At some point, there has to be discretion. And the ability of the of the design professionals and the construction professionals and the building officials to work together.
I think we may need to provide some guide rails as to where the discretion lies or what the limits are because things like. Oh, I just decided I didn't want to put in unshielded fixtures.
Well, maybe, maybe the secret is conditions. Maybe we need to, you know, highlight in conditions those things that are important to the scene. Um and even if they're on the plan, we have to say, okay, well, this is important to us.
We should remember that, though, because we sometimes just say, oh, it's a requirement of the.
Plan, so that's.
It's a requirement of the code, so it's already, like, we did that tonight, right? It's a requirement of the code that they're gonna do restoration.
Yeah.
We didn't make that a condition, right?
Right.
Um so, you know, I don't disagree with you. I'm just saying, like, that's not how we've operated in the past. We've shied away from conditioning.
Right.
But we could.
But we could if we feel that, I mean, if if we establish a mechanism where the conditions that we establish are separate. If there's any change to any uh design based on, you know, if it violates any of the conditions, then it has to come back.
But maybe it's changed, it's an approved plan.
I know.
There, there wasn't a condition, it was an approved plan and they modified it.
Right. And I'm saying that if we're, if we're, if it's important to us that the front door of that building be on um on State Road. That is state road, right? Yes, thank you. Uh then we could say that, okay, uh as a condition that the, even though it's on the plan.
But how do you, how do you know what?
Because we know what's, we know what's important to us. We don't care if it's, if the window is.
You don't know it's important until it happens.
That I.
I, I don't know. I mean, we we said it over and over again. Building has to face states.
Yeah, I think where we have that zoning. Through thoughtful discourse and engagement with, you know, B R P C and. Community outreach and engagement and taken into town meeting and the change in the zoning is intended to sort of establish a new character. Or reinforce strong existing character. No deviation is permitted, like. We want the streets to have front-facing facades that engage the street, right? We're trying to. Move the community where it's not focused on walkability towards walkability. So I I think maybe we need to be more. Clear about what what are the really important items? Six feet for a solar array foundation. No, I I don't think that that requires a new site plan, Chris. But changing the front facade of a building. I do think that that requires a change in site plan.
Yeah.
So.
We don't have a mechanism for coming back on site plan.
Well, that could be a condition too. If if you deviate, you have to come back. If you, if you remove a front facade, you have to come back. If that's the important characteristic.
I mean, but you know, what I don't like about going this route is that when we're all gone from this board. Nobody's gonna know about, you know, the power of condition necessarily. And that could just disappear. So I'd rather see some things in in writing. That states certain things that maybe we can't define that can be deviated from site plan.
So.
It's a construction issue, then that's different. You know, I don't know what else. You know, what do we look at? We look at garbage, lighting, accessibility, that, you know, inclusion to the.
Drainage.
And then we can be discretionary as well.
But but the the building inspector. Clearly, he gets that time review. He sees what's been improved. He gets the site, he gets the the building permit. And he knows what's been changed and what hasn't because it's got the drawings in it. So it's really, but he has, we don't have to, I don't think we have to go overboard on this. We just have to enlist the building inspector. To enforce our site plan review.
But the problem is by law, he has discretion over that portion. Yeah, he could waive the entire building code if he wanted to. He has, I mean, the building code given that kind of.
Not really. It is definitely.
But he can waive a lot.
I had to ask for waivers and they've not been that accommodating yet. And I've had state building officials overrule local building officials. So anyway, but that's like.
What's your relationship to the building inspector? Can you talk, do you see?
We, we can, oh, I mean, we.
Well, I'm just, I mean, if you're sitting here listening to us with all the site plan reviews and all this process and then you hear us upset about something else and. Do, can you put pressure on the building inspector to say, we're really watch this one, we're concerned about this or?
That's, communication can have, yeah, pressure is not the way, but communication can, you know, we're in the board's approval and say, this is. What we really care about or as I take the approval down to the building inspector's office, I can say. This is discussed a lot. This is something we really want you to look at. That can happen. But again, it comes back to the building inspector saying, is that a material change? This window, which was gonna be a standard-sized window, is now only a two-thirds window on the street side. Does that matter?
Yes.
In certain cases, it may, in certain cases, it may not. Well, so the the trick is.
That's architecture, but that's not, that's not a site, that's not a site plan. The door is is. That's urbanism. That's not, that's the way the building engages with the street.
So if you have this board for that particular office, approve an entrance from the back parking lot and accessory exit from the front. The main entrance wasn't always.
That's understood.
The cables change.
Point, Chris, it seems like.
Well, I'm just saying, bring that in, gap up a lot. Set the record straight.
We, we did approve a primary entrance in.
Discuss, but some of your facts are a little bit.
We did approve a primary entrance in the back so that we could accommodate handicap spaces, recognizing that. You know, age and condition of a lot of the patients that may be visiting there, but we specifically wanted the door to engage the street. We did the same thing with the block. So, you know.
And he, and he said in the meeting that the front entrance will be removed and relocated to the south side of the door. That was in a minutes.
Jeremy, what did you want to jump in and say?
Well, I was um wondering just the, oops, sorry, the um by um. Having to um submit all the deviations, if that was like self-governing, you know, so that they're aware that anytime they. Um deviate from the uh approved plans, that they have to submit that. And so do you think that that's gonna help? Just that, because they're aware that they have to, that they have to submit all these deviations? But at least it seems like there's more thought gonna be involved in changing anything. And and I, and I, and I think like a lot of the things that we're concerned about, like, like definitely come up. Or seem like they came up in the discussions. And so like, yeah, I mean, maybe we just. Make sure to condition them, but because we did, I mean, we did have discussions about that front entrance. And I think when, you know, we're, when we have all of the parking at the rear of the buildings, of course, like, you know, the maintenance, because they're gonna be at the rear of the buildings. And so, you know, I don't. And so I think it's like if we want the building to kind of, you know, at least look like it's facing the street, then I think now we know. You know, we have to make that a condition. Um although I, I mean, I I remember, I remember comments about that. I I thought there was gonna be at least something that looked like a door and at least something that approximated a, you know, walkway to it. But I mean, maybe I'm remembering it wrong.
Learn it up.
All right.
To get off it, just, you know, for the record, it is the only building on that road with a door to set up.
Uh huh.
Yeah, another one, John, you might remember this too. So the the flying church, when it came through here was before my time. But that building came before the design advisory committee, when I was chairing the design advisory committee. And he came in and he gave us a copy of the originals that were through the original site plan. And then he was coming in for some kind of new review. I don't remember what it was.
Something changing the roof line or something.
Something like that. But he came in and what was approved in site plan for that project was materially completely different.
Oh, I know.
Than what was.
Oh, yeah.
So, you know, as a member of this board, it just makes me feel like, what's the point? What's the point of putting the applicant through this, this review if it really is not gonna make a difference? Because we're talking about building changes, but for all we know, they can put dumpsters in a different spot. Or they can fail to provide a spot to um to plow snow, to plow snow. Or they can fail to do proper accessibility to some, you know?
As an actionable item, I will follow up with the billing department on behalf of our board. And maybe we can just have more improved communication. This is sort of a perennial issue, so I think there's.
Maybe you just mentioned that um take special note of lighting before issuing a C O. Lighting on the plants.
Yeah, there's some lighting guidance that um a couple of the communities I work with, that we hand out with applications so that it's real clear. There um the Dark Sky International Organization that makes some guidance available. It's. Very pictographic, so it's easy for the layperson to understand, you know, different styles of lighting. I mean. We can, I know Chris has got a lot of resources. He hands out to applicants when they come to pick things up, so we can possibly make something like that available as well.
I really feel like we saw things and then and talked about that. And then what we saw was definitely not dark guy compliant. After it was built.
Yeah, it happens.
It seems hard to misinterpret that. Some of the discussion.
Yeah, I'm optimistic with the new billing official. There's more opportunity for constructive discussion. All right. Uh, is there a town planner report? No town planner report. Any board committee items? No. Not for anyone, Jeremy? No. All right, no board committee, I, issues that are concerned. Is there any citizen speak?
Two of the projects involve a master plan. I guess Janet, the other names haven't been scheduled?
They haven't been scheduled, but we, now that we're past the town meeting, we'll get that going.
I think they discussed it here, the master. I'm gonna make sure that I've notified.
I'll call you.
Thanks.
Is there anyone online with citizen speak questions? Hello, Eric, you're, you should be live now.
Hello, uh Eric Gabriel, ten fifty-two Main Street. Um just wanted to say thank you guys for everything you do. I just kind of jumped on and I jumped on because I wanted to correct something I said last time. When I was at your meeting a couple of weeks ago because it's, was driving me. Made me a little upset that I said it. So at one point, we were talking about the fire station and um uplighting, downlighting, all the lighting. And uh I made a comment that we gave away the keys to the town, you know, downtown in the lighting situation, which um. I actually hate that phrase and um and I apologize for saying it. Uh I do believe that there is places where we can get things back that were, you know, maybe voted in and decided upon in in error. Or in uh trial, you know, so. But I think with the uplighting, especially for the old fire station, I think that was a good decision. And I think that um. Lighting in that sort of fashion um with our, particularly with the old uh architectural buildings. In our downtown, um I think anything we can do to highlight those is beneficial. And again, I I know I'm biased due to being an electrician, but uh but anyhow, I just wanted to state that um. I just wanted to state that because I I do, you know, um I do know that some places are overlit. And I do think with work of everybody, we can get it uh get that light knocked down. So. I just wanted to clear that statement up from a couple of weeks ago. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, anybody else? All right, seeing no further comments, we'll adjourn at seven oh six. Thank you, everybody.